Folks, digressing, I wanted to call the meeting to order and welcome everyone to our seventh Library Building Committee meeting. And we have several guests on the car with us this evening. We have a robust agenda, so I am going to try and keep this moving. Because we, some of us have another commitment at seven o'clock. So hopefully, we can get through this. Before getting into the, well, we did the roll call, everyone is here, Michelle, we don't need to, excuse me, Nancy, we don't need to go through that, do we?
Yep.
No, okay, great. Old business, item number three, is there a motion to approve the minutes? Mark, is there a second? Lois, great, any discussion? Nancy, I have one comment on the minutes. I think under future meetings, there was a date of January nineteenth of twenty twenty, I think it should be October nineteenth.
Very correct, make that change.
Okay, and that's all I saw, I don't know if, are there any other comments with respect to the minutes? Okay, then, I guess there's a motion to accept the minutes as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, any opposed? Abstentions, great, thank you all so much. Want to roll into a new business, and before doing that, I wanted to take a moment to thank everyone on the committee for your input and engagement. We heard your concerns as they relate to the fees for the project. And just wanted to share with you, as you know, at our last meeting, we had discussed a fixed sum for the project. And we have gone back with Tai Su Kim Partners, and as you may have seen in the materials, we now have three ranges with a sliding scale. So if you recall, at the last meeting, we were at one point five million dollars for a new building up to twenty two million, one point six for a renovated building up to twenty two million. And now we have three ranges, the first range being twelve million to fifteen point five million, with a fixed fee of one point one five million for new construction, and a fee of one point two five for a renovation, and then the second range is fifteen point five million through nineteen million. And the fee for that would be new construction, one point three five million, and for renovation, one point four five. And then the final range is nineteen million up to twenty two million. And for new construction, that fee would be one point five million. And for a renovated building project, it would be one point six. And in the contract, it reads that if the price of the construction exceeds twenty two million, then we would renegotiate what that fee would be for any amount over twenty two million. So again, I, and the contract itself is with the town attorney. But I did want to let you all know that we did hear the concerns raised by the body, and I think we were able to reach a sliding scale contract, which I think worked for the town, and I think is, we think, a pretty good deal. I wanted to thank Richard and Whit and the folks from TSKP for working with us to make that happen. But I, again, wanted to thank everyone on the committee for your input and pushing for that, because we heard you, and I think it makes sense. So I'm going to turn it over to Whit and Richard for an update from the architects, Tai Su Kim Partners.
Thanks, I'll hand it off to Richard, I think he will pick up from here.
Okay, great, thanks very much. Well, first of all, I want to thank you, Mr. Chairman, as well as the committee for getting the contract behind us, because now that we're got that behind us, we are ready to roll into the actual work itself. From my office, you may recall, Deanna Lancer is a project manager on the team, she has been working to compile the files of whatever existing documents that we have on work that we've done previously, which consists of sites that still are under consideration by this committee. Whit briefed me on the last meeting that you had. We're still looking at six sites, although the exact sites, I believe, are subject to change. So what we would like to do is focus on the ones that we believe are firm in your minds, which I believe are the existing Prosser Library, the Town Hall, and perhaps the Community Center. I think if you could help us at least focus on the ones that you are firm about, and then we'll hold off on the ones that you're not certain about.
The other one that might be firm is the McMahon library as well, I would think.
Okay, so I think there are four that I think you're pretty firm about.
That is correct, and we're going to have a conversation and discussion about site selection actually later on in the agenda, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
That would be great. And I'm sure that library programmers and consultants for community engagement potentially, the Burgers who are here tonight might also be interested in knowing the method of determining what other sites might be under consideration, and whether or not community needs to be participating in that discussion. For us to really get into the planning of the library, in addition to the sites, finalization is a program. Now, I believe Whit shared at the last meeting with this committee, the program that we used in a prior study, which had a total gross building area of approximately thirty six thousand square feet. But libraries are not just a collection of square footage, they really are the functions that you want to have occur in these libraries. And so I'm hopeful that we can work with the committee, and I look to the committee for how to develop a mechanism for writing that program, whether it's a subcommittee that's tasked with that assignment, and that we would work with the subcommittee, which I imagine would include the library director, but it could include members of the committee, as well as perhaps other people, and perhaps a consultant that you may want to engage. But that's a critical ingredient, to have a discussion about what kinds of activities you anticipate occurring in your, in your library, so that we can start allocating square footages and the relationship between those activities in order for us to develop a plan.
And, and just, I would add, certainly, as I'm sure the Burgers would attest, that since the study that was done in twenty sixteen, libraries have continued to evolve, and so the things that were a priority back then may no longer be a priority, and they're new items to consider, so that's what we want to pin down.
So that's where we are, quite frankly, we haven't progressed to doing any site planning yet. We were hopeful that we would have this discussion with you about the next step on defining the program, and I think for us, that's really an incredible, a critical ingredient in going forward. So with that, I turn it back to you, unless Whit, you have something else you'd like to add, I turn it back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you so much, Richard, and that makes sense, and we will be gathering, you know, amongst ourselves, along with Elizabeth and her staff, to talk more about programming and spatial needs. And hopefully, and we also had a conversation last meeting about the criteria vis a vis site selection, and I think we want to make sure that we nail that down too, so that we're all comfortable with the criteria that will be used to determine the best sites.
Okay, great.
Okay. Before we move on, I just wanted to get any input from the membership as to the three phases of the, excuse me, sliding scale with respect to the construction, any thoughts on that?
I do have some thoughts and some concerns, and I'm going to try to express this without expressing my frustration and pardon our guests on this call right now, but I think that we're putting the cart before the horse by continuing to bring them here to have presentations and for them to provide us with the different, additional information when we haven't cleared up some things as a committee. And so I think that, you know, it's paramount that we address some of the things within the contract, as well as bits, well, I can't even say the contract, I can say parts of the contract that's been shared with us. And I think that that should be a private conversation amongst the committee and the public here in Bloomfield excluding our presenters. So I mean, you know, I think, I hope that we can get back to that further along in the conversation, if they could present and provide us, it seems like TKMP has already done that. If the presenters with regards to reaching out to our committee or community for survey, if they could present the options that they have available, and then we move along and have a committee discussion, I think it'd be valuable, but I think that, that their input is not warranted at this stage in time. And thank you so much, this is Budansey.
All right, any other comments? Michelle? You're muted, Michelle. Still muted.
Okay. You hear me?
Yes.
I don't have a problem with participation at any particular point, although sometimes participation, if it's premature, can be sort of counterproductive, but I don't think that's where we are. What I do have a reservation about is limiting any of the number of the sites that was previously brought forward for our consideration. The assignment to us from the chair was only given today with regard to coming up with looking at our priorities from the standpoint of which sites we would look upon as being favorable from our own points of view. So as far as that is concerned, I am looking at all six sites, only because as the previous speaker said, we haven't had a chance to really knock this around among the committee itself, not to say that we can't do that now. It doesn't bother me to do that, no matter who's here, but I think that a consideration of each of the sites, and if there are commonalities that members of the committee want to knock certain ones out of contention, so be it according to the wishes of the majority. But I believe that that's a primary decision that the committee will make and share that with input from our professional advice. So I would, I would like to see that occur, and the only reason, another reason I would like to see that occur is if we are parenthetically looking at six of these sites having similar or identical concepts that were proposed on those sites last time around, we should make that clear. If we are just looking at the site absent any consideration of that, because we might be considering something entirely different, we should be clear about that too. So it's sort of like rounding out the, A, the discussion, and B, what the discussion shall contain, and then trying to put all of those things together, receiving our advice from our professional people and going from there. That would be, I think, a primary structure that, that might work, that would enable each of the persons on the committee and ad hoc to be able to consider all of the possibilities. I don't see any reason to start knocking down sites at this point, so that's my contribution.
Thank you. Anyone else? Lois, yes.
My understanding was that we were not making the site decision ourselves without input from the community. I thought that having input from the community on all aspects is what we had agreed to originally, and therefore, the Burgers might be very helpful in telling us how we would proceed with that question, at least that's what I'm.
She went, she went.
You lost you.
Lois, you muted yourself.
I'm sorry, at least my understanding from the mayor was that all aspects were supposed to be included in our considerations, including the site, and if we go from six to four, without any community conversation, what have we done?
Right, and Lois, thank you for that, and I agree that what we've discussed is that, obviously involving the community in all aspects of the project, but we're not looking to eliminate sites, but what we're trying to do is come up with a list of six potential, possibly seven sites, because it was my understanding and belief from the committee that there were other sites that others may want to add to our list. And we are not able to give our architects a list of twenty sites, ask them to vet. So at some point, we have to nail that down to six or seven. And so we will have a conversation about that, but I, I have varying degrees of thoughts with respect to involving the community and open-ended questions as to a site. But we can talk about that further, but I think it's incumbent upon us to come up with a list of six or seven that we can present to the community and weigh in there, but we can talk more about, I guess, what the majority feels is the best way to do it, and we can also hear from from the Burgers as to sort of what they think about that. But I do agree that we plan to open it up to the community, and, but we're not limiting to four, we're not trying to go down, but we just want to make sure that if there are other sites that folks in the committee want to have on our list, that we have an opportunity to discuss and vet those.
One question that Richard and I had when we were talking earlier was, at this point, has the, the town's planning department had any input on these sites?
I don't know that they've had a fresh look at them, obviously, they've looked at some of those sites in the past. But I don't think that they've given it a fresh look, as far as I know, Nancy, do you know that?
No, they haven't.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah. But again, we're still at the early stages, I mean, we, I don't know that we were, or are in a position to go there. But I think this committee needs to meet again to really sort of talk more about the sites and come up with a number of sites and talk more about the criteria for selection. Okay, what I wanted to do is I asked Nancy to give us an update, as many of you know, the Town Council Finance Subcommittee met on Monday evening, and we talked about this in some of our previous meetings, where the town's financial advisor was giving an opinion on the bond capacity of the town. And so I've asked Nancy to update the committee on that meeting, so Nancy, can you just give us an update on that meeting?
Sure, I'm going to give you the Cliffs Notes version, I did see several of you at the meeting on Monday night, but for those of you that weren't there that want more than the Cliff Notes, you can go to the Town of Bloomfield's YouTube page and see the actual meeting. But the results of what the town's financial advisor presented to the town were encouraging news, especially for this project. The town has a double eight plus bond rating, which is one step below the highest in Connecticut that we could have, and so we're one step below the West Harkfords and the Dariens of the world, and what that means is the town can borrow money at a very favorable rate. So moving on from that, there is currently existing debt, as you, most of you probably know, due to the two projects that were approved in two thousand sixteen, those projects are currently being, were authorized to be bonded. Existing debt that the town had is now falling, the payments are falling. So there's some room in the town's ability to bond, starting probably in twenty twenty three, and when I say room, I mean that the town typically likes to keep its debt service level at a certain dollar amount, so that capacity becomes more available in twenty twenty three. And that capacity is at a certain dollar amount, it's also under, slightly under the town's a certain percentage of the budget, and certainly below a certain percentage that would make any bond rating agency nervous. So twenty twenty three, actually, it may sound like, like it's not good for the project, and by the way, when I say there's capacity, the town's financial advisor thought that there was certainly enough room for the town to budget capital projects in total about between twenty five and thirty million dollars easily beginning in twenty twenty three. So if you work those numbers back, it fits nicely with this project, because we're talking about a referendum in November of twenty twenty one, and then the design phase and the bidding phase would probably take us until late twenty twenty two. As I see the architects shaking their heads, so thank you for the confirmation. And then the construction would begin depending on the timing of it all sometimes in twenty twenty three. So it's actually, you know, the, the stars would be aligning for this project to be able to go forward, given that time period. So that's just the Cliff Notes version, I can talk for an hour about this, but rather than doing that, I encourage anybody that has additional questions, you can either ask me afterwards or take a look at the YouTube video on the town's YouTube channel.
Mark, yes?
Yeah, just one comment on that, Nancy, to make it clear, and I'm repeating something you said, but it's important. That, that range of twenty five to thirty million was an aggregate of all capital projects in, in that, you know, in twenty twenty three going forward. So there are other things the town may want to spend on for capital projects, so this was not simply devoted to this library project.
Okay. Thank you, Nancy, and I know that there was also a report from the financial advisor, and I think if folks are so interested, we could probably make that available to the committee, are we able to do that, Nancy?
Yes, I can send it out to the committee.
Okay. All right. All right, thanks for that update. I want to switch the agenda a little bit and bring on the Burgers with Library Development Solutions, and we can do the site discussions following their presentation. And I will let Whit introduce them.
Whit? There we go, sorry, just had to get myself unmuted. Thank you, yes. We are familiar with the Burgers' work with libraries, they've been involved for many years, I'm sure they can introduce themselves and their background, but we are doing some work down at Meriden Public Library now, and they had worked with that library to get it into a position to be able to develop a project, and we have been beginning that project, so they have a lot of experience both in community surveys and in programming and visioning, I think, so let me hand it off to them.
Thanks, thanks, Whit.
Thanks.
So thank you for inviting us to tell you a little bit about what we do and how we may be helpful, and as Whit mentioned, we have a great deal of experience in working with communities who are interested in either expanding, renovating, or building new libraries. I personally have built, was the director of a library at the time that we constructed a new library and raised all the money to pay for it. And so I've been there from site selection, which I know is a complicated process, to community input, to design development, and all the way to cutting the ribbon. So we have pretty intimate knowledge about how this works, and I think what we can do, depending on what your needs are, offer you menu of services that you can pick and choose from. So I think the initial contact from, from Tai Su Kim and Partners was around doing a community survey, getting some input from the community about the project and site selection, type of library ideas for what that new library should be, should be like, and we have a great deal of experience in doing community surveys, both related to building projects and strategic plans, and I'm going to let Alan just talk to you, tell you a little bit about that, how we do that, or should I run through the whole menu of what we can do? Let's do that, and then, and then we'll, we'll go back and talk about what, what your interests are. We can also help with the development of the building program that was mentioned earlier. We've developed many building programs over the years, including the building program for the Darien Public Library, the Princeton Public Library, the Wilton Public Library, which was a Tai Su Kim project. I'm blanking, I have to go look at my list, because I can't remember them all anymore. Hoboken, we worked with the Hoboken Public Library in New Jersey, recently worked with the Skokie, Illinois Public Library, the Montclair Public Library, Maplewood, and the list goes on, we can send you all of this. But building program essentially takes you from thinking, helps you think about exactly what was, what Richard mentioned earlier, which is it's not about, let's build something that's thirty six thousand square feet, but what is it we're trying to accomplish with this building? And how do we intend to use the space, how much space do we need for library materials, how much space do we need for people, how much space do we need for meetings? How does, now we're having a conversation about how does COVID affect short term and long term, how we design buildings, I don't know that anyone has that answer yet, but it's certainly something we have to think about in terms of furniture mobility, stack mobility, and that kind of thing.
Changes in digital collection.
Changes in digital collections, so. So when we write, when we write a building program, typically what we do is we meet with the project stakeholders and the library staff and the architects to, to really firm all of that up, so that we can describe space by space what you're trying to create and the specific functions that, that need to be accommodated in that.
And we also think it's critical too, if, are we saying, by the way, that a referendum is required to complete this project? Or it's preferred?
No, it's required.
It's required, so if we're looking ahead a year or so for a referendum, what we'd also be able to do in discussing a survey as well as other things, how do you position yourself so that you will win the referendum? How do you position yourself so that people understand what you're being asked to support? So we take a look at how deep your support is today, what kind of penetration and reach you have in your card registration? We take a look at your email database and what kind of reach you have with that. I did not notice an email newsletter, maybe I just didn't see it on the website. Is there one? You're right, I just didn't see it on the website anywhere, so, I mean, so we take a look at all those things, what, how are you positioned? Not just to have a referendum, but how are you positioned to have people understand what the referendum is for, and also how to win a referendum?
And how to get them excited about the project, right?
And which is. Very excited about the project, so we've been able to do that successfully in many communities, including, well, quite, quite a few, and with a year lead time, I think you have a great opportunity to make sure the library is positioned the way you want it to be.
Right.
And that people review, now you may be already having very tremendous support from the library, I mean, from the community, so it's even more important, I think, to make sure that with all these elements that may be involved with this type of change, that people understand what the vision is, and that they become part of that vision and passionate about the kind of change you want to make. So just recently, I'd say, survey work that Whit mentioned in Meriden, so Meriden, which is a community three times your size, but they had a very successful survey of almost twenty five hundred responses to, to a community-wide survey. Newington, a few years ago, which is a little larger than you, also had a survey of about twelve hundred responses. And these were not mailed to every household, these were using the town's database, using the library's database. You may also want to opt to make sure every household gets a copy of the survey. So we'll take a look at how that happens and how people participate in it, and at that way to Brookfield, Connecticut, we're involved in a survey with them. Norwalk recently as well, that is looking to renovate their main library downtown. Had about eighteen hundred responses to a survey, and a lot of the questions in that survey were about how to improve the, the current library, so that it meets people's interest and meets people's needs. So it becomes. Um, so it becomes uh, you know, through the use of the library website, through the used library newsletter, through the towns. Uh, in Hoboken survey we've worked on recently, the, the mayor decided to use the Nixel system, you know, the early warning system. Right? And, and sent out the link to the survey to every household.
So everybody got a phone call saying, complete the Hoboken Public Library survey. It was, it was actually pretty effective. Yeah.
So there's many ways uh we can look at how to make sure people are aware and, and to make sure people are involved. What we ask in the survey will also be critical to what you want to accomplish. So I know someone mentioned before six or so different sites and how to get people involved in site selection. So we need to be very careful about what questions you ask people so that that type of information is designed to really make sure people are informed and they're not going off on
Right.
tangents that aren't gonna help the, the decision-making process.
And for sure, we wouldn't wanna offer any sites that aren't um buildable or need major remediation or, you know, in the end would be way too expensive for you to ever build anything on. So the, the sites you offer have to be vetted and you know that they work.
Or like in Brookfield, Connecticut, where they decided to take a soccer field.
Yeah, they decided they wanted to build their new library on the soccer field, did not go over well with the community, right? Lots of land in Brookfield, but the soccer field was the thing they focused on and did not succeed. So, yeah, those kinds of things are important to take into consideration.
Uh, wanted to open it up for a couple of questions. I, I had one right off the bat. Um, with respect to not so much the substance of the survey itself, but I'm thinking that we would wanna do surveys and some community forums.
Mm-hmm.
With respect to the communication plan, do you do a lot of social media? I mean, we have a local paper, I mean, different ways, because I think one of our concerns is that we wanna make sure that we reach those that are not always reachable.
Right.
So we understand today that uh, uh, social media is the way people communicate today primarily. Even eighty-five percent of adults use so, some type of social media on a daily basis, uh, including people seventy-five and older. So, so we need to take a look at uh today, the library's uh Facebook uh attachment is a thousand uh followers, Instagram is five hundred, uh, your YouTube followers are twenty-three uh subscribers. So we wanna take a look at how you use your social media and how to take those and others uh uh methodologies and really explode them. And, and really, if, if you have a thousand Facebook followers, how do we turn that into five thousand? Uh, how do we turn Instagram followers into three, four, five thousand as well? So they are critical. So when, in some communities, especially in New York State, uh, where board members, do we have any board members here, by the way?
Two. Okay, two.
Yeah.
Great.
So board members in four, in, in many New York State libraries are elected. Uh, in most New York State libraries, they're elected to, to the board. Some libraries we worked with recently, the only way that they have uh campaigned uh was through social media. That's it. No other way. So we know it's effective. We know it's, it's important to where you reach people and how you find people.
Yeah, and we would work with you to identify um from either past experiences of the library or other organizations, how they have effectively turned people out for, for public meetings.
So we found out in Assanin, New York recently, where we can help conduct a survey in both English and Spanish. Uh, and we asked people how they wanted to receive information from the library. On the English language survey, the number one choice was email newsletter. Number two choice was uh Facebook. Uh, number three choice, I think, was the website. On the Spanish language version of the survey, guess what the number one choice was? No guesses? Text.
Text messaging, right? So that's also a very new way to communicate with people is to remind them by, via text, right?
So it's important to find out how people wanna be communicated with, how we communicate with them so that they can join on with, with, with your vision of what you wanna accomplish.
Okay. Any questions, comments from the committee?
Udunzi has her hand up.
Go ahead. Uh, Lois will go to you, and then we'll go to Udunzi.
Um, I think one of the important goals for me is to get people who haven't been in the library, interested in the library, and committed to learning about this project so that in the end, they actually use the library.
Right.
Well, I, that would be an emphasis that would be important to me. And I don't, I, I don't know that you could do it through the standard library outreach, which is going to people who are already using it.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Yeah, I think a part of that is how you promote what we're trying to do, right? So um, it might be around help us reimagine the library, and you can give some examples of what that might look like, you know, meeting space for all or more, whatever it is, um, something that will pique people's interest and maybe bring them out. Also, lots of times we use um incentives. So on the surveys, typically we offer a um um, we work with the library to select a, a incentive like an iPad or an iPad Mini or five hundred dollar gift certificate to ShopRite or whatever it might be, that will motivate people to fill out the survey and leave their email address with us so that we're collecting data. Um, but also there's an incentive for them to finish the survey. So, you know, there's a number of techniques we can use to try to motivate people.
So your, your idea is a paper survey or?
No, no, it's actually not. No, it's a combination of paper and push email.
So.
So we'd like to get, it depends on what's available um i- in Bloomfield. But if the town has a database of all households, you know, we might push it out that way. If the library has a, a deep list of.
So Elizabeth, what, what is our data, email database from the library? I mean, what size?
I don't have the exact number for the size. Um, it's an opt-in email distribution list that we send actually out through Gmail. Um, and that's currently done on a weekly basis, um, but I can get the exact numbers out.
Okay, so we might use a variety of techniques to extend the reach, um, depending on what's available to us. You can purchase email lists. The town may have email lists. The schools may be willing to share a list. Do you have a list at the library? And our goal would be to send it out email, cause that's easier for most people.
Through constant contact or through?
Right, and then to have it available in print for those who may not use email or, or uh computers.
Right, thanks. All right. I know Udunzi had her hand up. Udunzi?
Yes, thank you. Um, I'd like to know, would you be able to take our information, because we have multiple databases throughout town. So we have the library, we have Park and Rec. I see Dave is on the call. We have our social services department, and we have our, our town hall email in which they distribute information to our citizenry. Would you be able to take all of that information from these different entities and combine it in a way to where you can send it via email as well as via text?
Possible, but we'd need a, a third party to do that.
Yeah, constant contact and mailchimp. You'd be able to export to them and they would.
You have a relationship with a third party that has done this for you before?
Um, we haven't actually consolidated an entire list, but, but it's possible to do it. So it's just an export of. One is, everybody has to agree to share their lists and then to um export those emails to the um, third party who will deduke them, you know, cause you don't want everybody getting hit sixteen times.
Absolutely. Okay. And so when you said that, when you said that earlier on, when you gave reference to some people or you got feedback from the Spanish population in terms that they would prefer um text, how would we be able to implement something to actually, or, yeah, to actually get that feedback from our community as to how they would prefer? So would that be a part of your initial um surveying of the community to how?
Yeah.
So that's a part of what you offer?
Mm-hmm.
So I think again, you need to start now. So you need to start tomorrow. And, and that is building an email da- building a really robust email database.
Okay.
Uh, that the library owns. So uh, and look at constant contact or mailchimp and see what a contract with them would cost you uh and how to use it. Uh, it'd be great if I can, maybe Elizabeth, you can send a, a link to your newsletter so I can see what it look, we can see what it looks like. Uh, but in order to win that referendum and to communicate with people, you prob- I'm sorry, our population is what, twenty-one thousand?
Yeah.
I'll give or take based on the two thousand and ten census.
Yes.
So it'd be, so it'd be great if we can get a, and, and do you know what your circulation database is?
How many registered borrower, how many borrowers do you have cards out there?
I'm sorry, I can't answer that question, Elizabeth.
I think Elizabeth's gonna tell us. Unmute.
Give me a second and I'll find that information.
So, so without, but, but I think the point is that we wanna create a database that is gonna be used for your general, here's what's going on at the library, as well as helping to build up people being used to getting a weekly email newsletter from you, leading towards this referendum a year from now. So it's a matter of, and, and, and maybe it also includes getting your circulation email database uh from library connection, which we did in Newington.
But does it have to actually be limited to that? Because.
It's a start. It's a start.
Okay.
You have to start somewhere.
Okay, that's why I mentioned that, you know, getting, uh, if the town has a, a database for all residents, that's great. And if they're willing to share it, that's great too. And then we can de, we can um put them together and dedupit. So we can't, we can't, but a third party can. Yeah.
Mark?
Yeah, it sounds like um your services would be a great enhancement to this process, but um, small but um. Uh, certainly your services overlap, but with our other, uh, with our staff abilities, uh, with our board abilities, with our design team abilities, programming, for instance. So how do you, how do you arrive at an appropriate scope services, given this unique team that we have?
Um, we do that in combination with your team. So, you know, I think after this call, you need to have a conversation about who's gonna do what. Um, oftentimes, we have a client who says, we need you guys to write the building program and, and give it to our architect. Sometimes we do it, recently I did it for um, a New York Public Library branch in collaboration with an architect they had already chosen, um, along with some community forums to get community input. So it's really, however you have it divided now, wherever you need us to fit in, we're pretty flexible and willing to help bring you to a successful conclusion. Um, but you need to tell us what, you know, what he would like, like to do. And I think that's a conversation with your architects and um.
Yeah, I imagine the architects, and I imagine the architects are looking ahead at conducting some types of charrettes and, and community meetings uh when they're ready and when it's the right time to do it. So uh, what we hope to do is to be able through a survey or other ways inform that process that they're gonna be doing. Uh, so, so it means everyone really working together. And conversations like this help us really inform the process in terms of what role we can possibly play with you and what role you'd want us to play.
Right, and sometimes it's, it's a role as advisor or consultant so that we're, we're, we bring to the table many years of experience in working with libraries and library design and, and working in successful library projects and some that have been not so successful, not the ones we've worked on, certainly. But, but um that we're there to critique and, and sometimes to even provoke, to get you to think outside of your comfort zone about things that perhaps you may not be considering right now, but are things that you should be thinking about. So, so we're there to be um helpful.
I might, I'd add just, just to their comment, just that, that, um, you know, certainly we have done a number of libraries and we have some experience in the programming and, and some of the trends, but I would think the Burgers have a much broader view of what the state of the art is in terms of libraries and design. And some could be able to perhaps offer some examples of different types of program spaces that maybe uh the community hasn't thought about. And I think that would be a valuable asset to the team.
Oftentimes I'll just put a slide deck together of some examples of spaces as a way to kind of test your reactions and um, and talk about things that you might wanna consider, right?
This, this is extremely helpful. I wanna make sure we open it up so I can hear some different members of our committee who may have some questions, and the committee itself will take some time to process and, and get back to you. But I do wanna make sure that everyone uh has an opportunity to, to ask a question or to comment if they haven't. We only have a few minutes left. Anyone else have any thoughts or questions? No? Okay. All right. Well, thank you all. That, that was tremendous.
You're welcome. And it sounds like you have an exciting project planned.
We do, and we're very excited about it. We got a great team, but what we'll do is uh, we'll take some time and sort of and get back to you all, and uh we'll be in contact with our director Elizabeth and, and her team as well.
Okay.
Nice meeting you all.
Nice meeting you all. Thank you for taking the time to talk to us. Bye. Good night.
I see a chat sign on here. Oh, seven thousand cop, okay. All right. All right, I think um we should take some time and, and process and come back to our next meeting and uh talk it through and figure out that to what extent, if any, we wanna use them. And uh maybe we'll hear from our director as to sort of her thoughts as to what uh the staff and team can do and what we need help with. Uh, but I, I do think that in interest of time, we may want to hold off on the site discussion until our next meeting. Um, but, cause I wanna get Elizabeth's report in, um, and then maybe take uh five minutes now if you all want to talk a little bit about what we just heard from um the Burgers. I think they're great. Um, we could use some help, in my opinion. Elizabeth, do you have any thoughts?
Yeah, that was very interesting and their, their background and what they bring to the table with all the different projects that they've worked on and clearly very different communities um across the board, including Hoboken. Um, I think we could get a lot of great advice and um hopefully a survey that uh would get a lot of feedback. I would love to see a, a sample survey. And I'm also very curious about how they were able to um make sure they were inclusive surveys of um many different types of people.
Right.
And again, I'm a big proponent, in addition to the surveys, I, I'd like to see some live, to the extent that we can, forums where people have an opportunity to come out and, and ask questions or, or give feedback and input. And, and those can be done in conjunction with the surveys as well, I think. Any other thoughts?
I'll give you an example of, um, I keep thinking about the Syrian family that my husband is working with. Um, they've been in the United States almost five years now. The kids come to the library, but they're lucky, you know, just to make it from day to day. If they're gonna be consulted on what kind of a library they want or what it could do for them, they're gonna need a lot more than an email or a paper survey. And I'm sure there are other people like that in the community.
Right. That's a good point. Okay, uh, Elizabeth, do you want to give your report?
Sorry. And I just want to apologize ahead of time if there's any background noise. My children are being babysat by a TV right now. Um, so it was really helpful to hear that from the Burgers. I wanted to let everybody know that the library board, right now, we are figuring out, um, how we want to approach this as well. We have yet to survey the community, um, about our COVID nineteen response. Um, so we're hoping to do something much more surface level than what the Burgers presented. Um, and the library board will be talking more about that and hopefully we'll have feedback for this group, um, based off of those conversations. Um, tomorrow we have an all-staff meeting where we will be talking about our vision, um, as a staff. It was interesting to hear, for me to hear from a bunch of my staff members that they did not feel very included in the previous, um, project. And, um, I, I want everyone to know that my staff is involved with all decisions that we make and all input, um, that comes through me to our board. Um, and there's a wealth of information and institutional knowledge from my staff that I think will be very helpful in this process. Um, so tomorrow is a vision meeting. We will be talking about, um, to kick things off, the, uh, food for thought that everybody's been thinking about is what their favorite spaces and why. It could be any place, your couch, a decorative arts gallery, or a meadow in Simsbury, whatever the space. Think about why you love it and be prepared to share. Um, we will then be talking about just some of the, uh, resources that we have on the Building Committee page on the Bloomfield Public Library site. Um, it includes some, uh, material from ties to Kim partners, um, as well as Whit's recent, um, blog post. Um, so we have a lot of things to help generate conversation and I'm hoping that we will have a simple document to share with this committee about, uh, the vision things that my staff would like to have included. Um, it is ready. Um, and I also wanted to let everybody know that we were the recipient of a grant from the governor to help us with our COVID nineteen response. So that's, um, some, to help us expand services during, during this time. So that's something else that we'll be working on and I, I just thought the committee should know that.
How much is the grant, Elizabeth?
Forty-two thousand. We were very fortunate to be considered by the governor and it is with the expressed interest to help increase capacity during these times. And we need help, so, um, that was really, uh, we're really thankful for that. And just, uh, to let everybody know that the governor's two main groups of focus um, were people that live alone and people experiencing homelessness during this time. Um, I wanted to thank everybody who has come through a forth, forward for a walkthrough. Um, I think we have six people left, so I will be reaching out to those people. Um, please note that I am very flexible, so we will work to make a time that works for you. And if you do not feel comfortable coming into the library, I will do a digital walkthrough with you. Um, I think it's helpful for people to see, um, especially some of the very serious issues that Prosser is dealing with during this time. Um, I just got a text during this meeting that a piece of the ceiling fell, um, tonight on our, our Wednesday open hours. Um, so I, I hope that the committee realizes the seriousness, um, of our work uh, because Prosser is a very problematic building. Okay, that's it from me. Thank you, everybody.
Questions for Elizabeth on her report? Okay, great. Uh, we just have a couple minutes. Wodunzi had a hand up. Wodunzi?
Yes, I, I'd like to first thank Elizabeth for her report. Thank you, Elizabeth, and I, and I look forward to hearing see, from you, if I don't reach out to you first to reschedule a walkthrough. So I thank you for the options that, uh, you've made available. I'd also, uh, like to request that the chair, uh, Greg, if you could forward a, a full copy of the contract and a full copy without the markups. So I, I'm interested in seeing what section four point three says. I'm interested in seeing what other sections that are referenced within what's been provided but not included, what they actually say. And I'm actually interested in seeing the entire contract and not in this markup status. I, I'd like to see it in a finalized status, please, and thank you.
I think this may be in the books that I.
You already have the contract.
I think they may be in the notebooks that were distributed.
Okay, so the, is that, are you saying that this is the only part that's been amended?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
All right, okay, uh, Nancy, are there any, uh, community?
There are people here. Is there anybody that's in the, um, that are attending that would like to speak? If you could raise your hand digitally.
What was the question?
Uh, members of the public. No one's raising their hand, so they're just going to observe us and so no one from the public, um, has anything to say tonight.
Michelle, did you have a comment?
No, I just didn't hear the question. I wanted to know what she was asking.
Wodunzi?
Nancy.
Oh, Nancy, I'm sorry, okay. No, she was asking if there are any comments by the public. All right. Uh, our next meeting is on the fourth of November and the meeting after that will be on the eighteenth, both at six P M. Uh, I am in contact with the Chair of the Library Board, Ava's on the line, about, uh, inviting the library board, uh, to one of our meetings. And hopefully we will find some time in November to do that. Uh, but just want to make sure that the library board is, uh, uh, up to speed and up to par as to what's going on with the Library Building Committee. Um, any final comments from the body before we adjourn? Lois?
Greg, before we, or when we get started on the signing discussion, I think it would be helpful, um, to know about the town center plan, some of the, where, where the library is thought to fit into, um, the rest of the town. If, if somebody has those ideas already, I think we should know them.
Okay.
And?
Go, Jess.
Yeah, I'd just like to say, uh, after having visited and taken a tour of, of both, um, the McMahon location as well as the Prosser location and having conversation with, uh, the director, um, I have to say it was very, very enlightening and educational. And, um, I would encourage, you know, anyone who hasn't to do that because it really did open my eyes in terms of what is available and what are the, um, pluses and minuses of each of the locations that we looked at. Um, and then some, some considerations, so, um, thank you, Ms. Lane, as well as, you know, the others who were on the, uh, the tour with us. It was very enlightening.
Thank you, Jesse. All right, all right. Is there a, a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great. All right, everyone, thank you so much for your time. Uh, thank you, uh, Wit and Richard. And, uh, we'll get a communication out to the body about, uh, what the agenda will be for the next meeting. And again, we will be preparing to discuss the, uh, site as well as whether or not we want to proceed with the consultants. Um, so right now, those are what I foresee as being the main, uh, agenda items, but, um, we'll definitely, uh, be in communication with you all. Thank you so much and, uh, enjoy the rest of your week. Thank you, Nancy, for monitoring.
Sure. Everybody.
Bye.
Have a good night, everyone.
Thanks. Take care, everyone.
Take care.